Can I have a motion to go into public session?
Aloud.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 1st, 2021. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially to remember the, our colleague in the Yorktown Central School District Danielle Coletta, and also the mother of Kathy Rodriguez, the mother of Andrea Schinkel, the mother of Michael Donnelly, the grandmother of Monica Fratigelli, the grandmother of Lauren Ferella, sister of Linda Daigle, and the father of Maureen Hines. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ron, before we start the meeting, do you want to say anything about Danielle?
Yeah, please, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. On February 22nd, our school community lost a beloved colleague. Danielle was in her 22nd year in the Yorktown Central School District with the first 17 at Brookside School and the last five at Mildred East Strang Middle School as a sixth grade English teacher. During this past week, we have heard some remarkable stories about Danielle and the impact that she has had on her colleagues, on her students, on families in the community. And, and this has been a really painful loss for all of us. My heart breaks for her family, my heart breaks for her colleagues who were like another family to Danielle and family to each other. And she will be missed. We flew our flags at half staff the entire week last week. Thank you, the Board of Education decided to cancel their meeting and out of respect for Danielle. And we are currently just working to support each other and looking for ways that we can honor Danielle's memory.
Thank you. Um, we're going to start with public comment, and the first part of public comment, as always, is agenda-related items. We're going to have two different public comments, and they're going to run two different ways tonight. The first one will run the way we've been running public comments since COVID started, and that is emails that have to do with the agenda were sent to our district clerk by 4:00 PM today. The second public comment, we've decided will be live at the end of the meeting. It'll only go for a maximum of 30 minutes. Please know that in order to request to speak, you're, you must have your video engaged, you must have your name, full name matching the name on your screen, and you must live in the Yorktown Central School District. We will tell you more about how we're going to handle that at the end of the meeting. Anybody raising their hand now, it's not going to do you any good till we get to the end of the meeting. So, Yvette, did we have any public comment about agenda-related items this, this evening?
No, we did not.
Okay, um, so can I have a point of order for the superintendent's report? I'd like to move, we have a student recognition for Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie student, Ron, can we bring that up?
Fine. That, as Yvette is pulling up, Yvette, I believe there's a video, is there a video presentation as well, or was that not?
There is, this is just the certificate.
Oh, Gavin Tonner is being recognized by PNW Bosie's as their student of distinction for October 2020. What a wonderful recognition. Dr. Ryan, Superintendent of Bosie's contacted us to share the good news, and we're just so delighted that Bosie's has selected one of our students to be recognized for the month of October. This is just such a fitting and terrific recognition. It's in recognition for outstanding leadership skills, academic progress, and community spirit. And we're just so proud of Gavin. So, Yvette, I will turn it over to you for the video presentation. So, no audio?
The Student of Distinction Award at Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie's. This award is a significant achievement for any student, having been recognized by our staff for outstanding performance and personal growth. Also want to take a moment to thank you for your continued support. We value our relationship with your school district, your superintendent of schools, and staff. And as a Bosie's, continue to look forward to serving your needs. And now for the presentation of the Student of Distinction Award.
Hello, my name is Lena Doronco, Special Education Teacher at the PNW Bosie LSB Lincoln Harris Program. And it is my pleasure to honor our student Gavin Tonner. Gavin Tonner is a talented, passionate, and dedicated student who has made great progress in our program. He has worked to improve his social, emotional, and academic skills, and with the support of our staff, he developed his own pathway to success. He's especially talented at singing and drawing. He also enjoys animals, playing with friends, and anything to do with music. For all these reasons and more, we have chosen him to receive the Student of Distinction Award. Congratulations Gavin.
We'd like to bring Gavin up to receive the award for being put in the Northern Westchester Bosie Student of Distinction, top for this month. Gavin. Oh, great job. You're going to close it up, so they can see.
Nice. Continue with the superintendent's report, Ron?
If I may, please. Yvette, can you pull up the presentation that I shared? So in the interim, perhaps I can give just a very brief update on some other matters that are happening as we're pulling up the presentation. So I'll share with you, there, there's some information about developments that are happening in town. We're aware of some of the proposed construction in town. You may be familiar with some of the projects that are on various, or at various stages of development. So there are conversations that have begun with regard to the Roma Building. There are conversations that are the Wyant Project, the Sound View Prep Project, and the Yorktown Green, which is where the Kmart Shopping Center is. All of those projects are zoned in the Yorktown Central School District. Our team's already, actually, we began quite a while ago, we began, actually, prior to last school year, investigating some of the options that are available to us. We'll report back further to the board what we've seen historically. On average, with units that are developed are about one and a half students per unit. So these are some of the outcomes that we've experienced, just if historical trends hold true with some of the developments that are happening. We're working with the town to get as much information as possible, along with some of the timelines that are being considered. My understanding is that these projects are quite far out on the horizon, just two to three years potentially away. So I don't think there's an immediate impact for the 21, 22 school year. But there, oh, there's a lot that will unfold between now and this summer, and we'll try to obtain as much information as, as we can on these projects, just so that can inform our planning. I see that you pulled up the presentation. I'd like to update the board and certainly our school community on our reopening and our continued efforts to reopen. I think I speak for our entire faculty and staff. When I say from the moment we closed schools back in March to when we had to construct a hybrid model to adhere to the distancing guidelines that were set forth at the time, our goal has been to return students to school. And I think our community and I think our board, I know our board is aware that that has been our continued effort. We want the children back in school, our staff want the children back in school. We believe that we can do this safely, and we have been advocating for this for quite some time. So with that said, there have been some changes to the guidance that we have received as a school district. I'll go through all of the changes, I'll go through the implications, I'll go through timelines, I'll go through as much of the information as I have right now, there are still questions that we don't have answers to. And we literally are working around the clock to answer the unanswered questions at this point. Yvette, you can go to the next slide. So I shared this in my very brief email to our, our community, our school community. We're going to be phasing in the full return of all students this spring. That's kindergarten through 12th grade. The distance between students will be less than six feet because the clarification from the County Department of Health came through that it's consistent with the State Department of Health, consistent with the CDC, where it's six feet between students or the use of barriers. And if the use of barriers means that we can return our students to where we know they belong in classrooms five days a week, that's what we're going to do. Yvette, next slide. So once phased in, oh, I'm sorry, you went too fast. Slide two. Oh, I'm, Yvette, can you exit the presentation, reload, and then go back into present, present mode? And I'll just continue as you, as you do that, if you can, no, I'm sorry. Just have to reload the, you can escape out. Up in the, yep, load, and then we can go back in. So once phased in, in-person learning will take place, and we're on slide three. Once phased in, in-person learning will take place five days per week. It will be a Monday through Friday model. Next slide. We're going to continue to offer the fully remote option through the rest of this school year. There are questions about September and whether we'll be offering a fully remote model come September. I don't know the answer to that question. Much of this hinges on what is required of us from the State Education Department and some of the other agencies that regulate schools. For this spring, and I think that's where the focus needs to be, is on the immediate term. I look forward to welcoming all of our students back come September. But for this spring, we're phasing in K-12, the return of students to the classroom, while still offering a fully remote option for students. Next slide, Yvette, please. Once, I'm sorry, if you can go back. Yeah, once the hybrid model at a given grade level is, I'm sorry, once a given grade level is returned, and we'll talk about timelines a little bit later, and there aren't specific dates for all of the grades at this point we're working through, but you'll get a general sense as to where we're headed. And all the factors that influence, that influence the timeline. And I think it'll be understandable as to why there's a little uncertainty, because some of the decisions are residing outside of the district at this point. The hybrid model, once, so for example, once kindergarten comes back, I'll share that the week of March 22nd, and this is part of the presentation, the week of March 22nd, we anticipate bringing kindergarten students back. Once the kindergarten students are back, there will be two options for enrollment. You can attend five days a week, or you can choose the fully remote model. We'll be sending out a survey. I wanted to present to the board first so that the board had all of this information, and we can discuss all of the implications and considerations. So there will be a survey that goes out, and for example, when the first grade is returned to five-day-a-week in-person instruction, there will be two choices, there'll be an all-in or a fully remote model. Yvette, you can go to the next slide. There are some guiding principles to this work. This is not a decision that we come to lightly. There's, I think you're all aware of how much time and effort has gone into researching this decision and then consulting with the experts and spending a tremendous amount of time, not only with the local Department of Health, but the State Department of Health, our medical director, and some of my colleagues in the region, consulting the research around the safety reopening of schools for a full return. Health and safety of our students and staff will always be number one. I hope that everyone's aware that, like you, like many of you, I send my children to school here too. And safety is not something that we can compromise. The mental and emotional wellness of our students and staff is also really, really important, and we're seeing that. Exactly how important that is, and we're seeing some, and we have seen some troubling things. We've seen some encouraging signs, and we've seen some troubling signs. And all signs point to, we need to return our students back to school, and they need to be able to come back to the greatest extent possible. And I'll talk about some of the factors that resulted in this happening in a moment. Certainly, guiding principles providing the highest quality of instruction. What we're seeing from the benchmark assessments is encouraging of our students and their academic performance, and we want to continue to build on that. And of course, maintaining progress and containing COVID. I've said this before, and it bears repeating, our schools are the safest place for people to be. I'll talk about some of the multi-layered mitigation strategies that we're using in our schools. And I would put our safety protocols up against any safety protocols anywhere. I've enclosed a chart, these are the active, if you look at the chart on the right side of the slide, these are the active cases in the town of Yorktown. This is a current slide as of this weekend. And you can see the top of that mountain, that was right around the time that we made the decision to go remote after the holiday break. It was the right decision, and the data confirmed that it was the right decision. It wasn't necessarily the most popular decision, but the health and safety of our faculty, staff, and students is not something to be compromised. At this point, you can see that the numbers are coming down. My hope is that they'll continue to come down. And I'm optimistic, I'm cautiously optimistic. And it's with that cautious optimism that I'm proposing the plan to you to return our students fully to school. Yvette, next slide, please. We're regulated by so many agencies, and we consult with so many agencies. These are some of them, the first four I've referenced often, but we've almost lost sight of the New York State Education Department. They're here, and they're probably the agency with whom we interact most frequently. But there's also Fire Inspector and OSHA. We'll talk about that, believe it or not, that has played an important role in our ability to reopen. And also, I should have included the New York State Education Department Code Enforcement Officer who works with our district. Yvette, you can go to the next slide. One of the big questions that I'm getting is what's changed? Dr. Howdy, you said a couple weeks ago, we can't come back fully, and maybe we can return kindergarten and some of the students in our special education program, or all of the students in our special education program. And now, this evening, you're making an announcement that we can return fully. And what I've shared with the community, and certainly with the board, our faculty and staff, is that we follow the advice of the experts. We follow the advice of the people who are trained professionals in this area, the State Department of Health, the local Department of Health, and our medical director. They're the experts in this area. As the guidance changes, we adapt to the changes. So, for example, quarantine rules. Early on in the school year, we were quarantining for 14 days. The CDC changed their requirements to 10 days, which is terrific. They serve an advisory capacity to the State DOH. Once the State DOH changed their guidance, we changed our guidance. 14 days became 10 days. Quarantine on the buses, a full-size bus is about 35 feet long. If the person at the front of the bus tested positive for COVID, we were required, prior to January 3rd, and I'll talk more about the timeline in a moment, prior to January 3rd, we were required to quarantine the entire bus. And I would call the Department of Health and just say, hey, I disagree with this. I have video cameras on the bus, I can tell you exactly who was sitting around the individual who was positive. And the belief was that we still had to quarantine everyone. And we followed the experts, and we followed the advice, that subsequently has changed. Now we can use the cameras that are on the buses, assuming that the cameras on the buses are all operational all of the time. We can use that as a resource to surgically extract who was sitting within a six-foot distance to the individual who tested positive. On high-risk sports, the Department of Health agreed to offer it, we followed suit, we offered it. And now the Department of Health has changed some additional guidance. And when I say Department of Health, I'm referring to the Westchester County Department of Health. Yvette, you can go to the next slide. The CDC and the State DOH have been consistent in their position. They have said consistently six feet of distance or barriers. And the barriers have to, the state has said that they have to be approved by the Fire Inspector, and they have to be improved in compliance with OSHA regulations. And there has to be some kind of fire resistance to them and many different specs that we have to follow. And those specifications are, are laid out for us, and we know what they are. What changed is in bullet two, it was confirmed on 2/22, and it was actually confirmed in writing today on 3/1, that the position of the DOH is going to align now to the New York State Department of Health. Previously, you'll recall that I've said, and it was issued to me in writing, that the position of the DOH was at six feet, irrespective of any other mitigation strategies used, six feet was required. That's changed, which has provided us with the avenue to welcome additional students, all of our students back to school. Our medical director supports the change as well, based on the latest research and based on the position of the Westchester County Department of Health, certainly, provided that the infectivity rates continue to go trend where they're trending, which is down. Yvette, you can go to the next slide. Other things have changed as well. So the quarantining guidelines from the DOH were revised on January 3rd, a little under two months ago. It resulted in fewer individuals being quarantined with each case. If you recall, which I'm sure you do, in the fall, it felt like we were closing our schools quite often. And that was a frustrating thing for all of us, the, the starts and the stops, and we're in one day, and we have to be out the other day. And a large function of this was staffing. That when a positive case would require the quarantining of 12 or 14 adults, based on the parameters at the time, it's difficult to fill in those absences and substitutes. This was pretty widely publicized, it was an article in the Journal of News. Substitute teachers are really, really difficult to come by, even today. It's really, really difficult to find substitute teachers. I'll put out another plug to the community. If anyone is aware of someone who would like to come work in the Yorktown Central School District, please send us an email, send me an email. If you'd like to work as a substitute teacher, as a teaching assistant in our schools, we're always looking for great people to work with, great children. We have worked through the contact tracing piece, that's been updated. The COVID vaccine has become available. Education workers are in the state's prioritization group 1B, which became eligible on 1/11, January 11th. But anyone who is familiar with the vaccination appointments knows that it's really difficult to schedule an appointment. I do want to thank our friends at Westchester Medical Center Health for their partnership and their assistance. We are in a terrific position with our faculty and staff because we have. What I'm seeing is, I'm not sure if this is all that, not everyone can see the, the screen in front of them, so I'm just not sure if we're zoomed in or zoomed out, but that might be one individual screen. But I'm narrating the slide, so that should help. Westchester Medical Center Health has been such a tremendous partner, and we're in such a wonderful position with regard to vaccinations. That development only happened on Friday. So we're so grateful, we're so appreciative. It'll take time to have faculty and staff in a position to, to be vaccinated for those who choose to receive vaccination, school districts are not able to mandate a vaccination for, for COVID. So those who are interested can have access and will have access. The rapid surveillance, and that's a big development, I don't want to minimize the development of the vaccine. That's a huge development here, and the efficacy of the vaccinations. And from what I gathered from our medical director, the efficacy, even in real-world examples, is remarkable. Rapid surveillance testing, I just want to thank two of our nurses, Lisa Epstein and Kim Cortese. We've started a rapid, and, and actually, our trainer, Justin Giuliano. Justin is administering some of the surveillance testing as well. We have a very robust surveillance testing program here in the district. We're using the Abbott Rapid, the Binax Now tests. The test takes maybe 30 seconds to administer results in 15 minutes. And we have been surveillance testing in earnest, in earnest for the past month or so. And we have offered that service to our faculty and staff. There was a clarification on barriers from the New York State Department of Health 223. I spent about an hour on the phone with the Department of Health going through what barriers are acceptable. I personally believe, but I'm not a medical expert, but I believe that a face shield would make more sense than a trifold barrier. Those don't meet, the face shields don't meet the OSHA and fire resistance standards that the state is looking for in these barriers. So the barriers are not, I'm sorry, the face shields are not an option as a viable barrier. So I just want to be clear on that, because that was a question I certainly raised. And it was answered in that regard. Yvette, you can go to the next slide. We've always taken a safety-first approach, will continue to take a safety-first approach. And I think we always have to monitor the situation, we have to monitor the situation locally. One of the things that you hear often is the infectivity rates in the community are very telling of infectivity rates in the schools, although the infectivity rates in the schools are generally lower. But higher community infectivity rate, higher infectivity rate within the school district. Lower results in lower, and that, that's just what I'm being told by the medical experts. We still need, now more than ever, to take this safety-first approach. And these are some of the things that we're doing, so we have the masks, obviously, the masks have to be worn, nose and mouth, that's a non-negotiable. The filtration and the ventilation are super important. Just the idea of opening one window is so profoundly important in ventilating a room. However, we're, and I think everyone knows we're doing so much more than that. We have unit ventilators that introduce fresh air into the classroom. Those are filtered through a MERV 8 filtration to filter air from the outside. And there's a cubic feet per minute calculation that goes into the introduction of fresh air into the rooms. And then we have the air conditioning HVAC systems in the buildings that are retrofitted with MERV 13 filtration. So that's recycling the air within the rooms and having that filter go through a MERV 13 filter, having the air go through a MERV 13 filter. We have the daily health screenings, the daily temperature screenings. Certainly, the hand washing and the hand sanitization is not going anywhere. That will be an integral part of anything that we do, the daily disinfection of all of the spaces in the building. That will continue, we have some terrific technology, the Clorox 360, the electric static sprayers that we have have been absolutely revolutionary with regard to the efficiencies that they create in allowing us to disinfect spaces in a really timely way. We're going to maximize distance to the greatest extent possible, but it will not be six feet between students. It can be between three and six feet for students, it may be four feet, it may be two and a half, in some cases, it may be five feet. Much of it will depend on how much space we're able to manufacture within the room, and that's something I'll get to in a little bit. But we will have the barriers, we are in adherence with the requirements by the medical experts, the DOHs. The cohorting of students, the contact tracing, the signage, the surveillance testing, again, and access to the vaccine. These are just some of the things that are happening, we're limiting traffic on the campus. There are just so many other measures that we're taking to make the school environment as safe as possible. We love our students, we love our teachers, we love our staff. We want everyone to be in the safest possible environment. I don't think we would be taking this step if we believed that we were compromising on safety. I think we can do this safely. And I believe in all of the measures that we've taken to welcome back our students fully. Now, Yvette, you can go to the next slide. In terms of some of the factors influencing timelines, the State Department of Health has agreed to look at our plan again. The plan is different from when I submitted the plan to the state in July. There have been changes. When I look at the quarantining language, we've gotten really good at contact tracing. We have been able to cohort the students and isolate the grade so that we can keep a building operational as one class goes remote. Those were not conversations that were happening back in July. And we, and I, and it's not unique to Yorktown, I think school districts in general have become more equipped to contact trace and to be able to isolate those who came in contact with a positive individual. With regard to the, the plan, there were some material changes. There were some, when I say material, I'm speaking to relatively substantial changes, speaking to the barriers, speaking to the distances. So I've had Speaking to relatively substantial changes, speaking to the barriers, speaking to the distances, so I've had that with the state DOH, they're looking at this. I was expecting a call today, I did not receive that call by the close of business, I'll be following up. Tomorrow morning for additional information as to when I can anticipate that plan being approved. I do anticipate it being approved after the forty-seven minute conversation that I had on this past Tuesday. I do anticipate that all elements that are required of us are included in that plan, in the draft of the plan. We have to receive and install the barriers. The ba- that, it, it's just a matter of. Work and, and getting the barriers in and installing them once we, once we receive them, there is a lead time on barriers, we're not the only school district. Considering this return at less than six feet with barriers. There have been conversations around the county and I think now as a result of the written guidance that this local department of health has issued, I think those. Conversations in other school districts will only intensify. And we have already placed our order for the barriers. There's construction and deconstruction, this is not furniture moving and furniture removal, we did that over the summer, this is. Moving fixtures in the room so that we can fit additional students with as much space as possible. And then we need to bring more desks, we need, we took the desks out, we put them in storage, we need to get the desks out and put those in storage, that will take some time for us. We need to look at the air filters again, we just had a comprehensive review of our schools, I have. I've got the reports, the reports are excellent, they're here, these are the reports that reviewed our schools and, and the review is excellent. Ventilation is excellent, I, I just want to make sure that we go through the filters to make sure that we're starting. In a place that I can put my seal of approval on and, and, and I can stand behind, and that's going to start with the air filtration as well. We're going to be sending out a survey to families because I understand the decision that's before families. Many of whom are in the hybrid model, eighty-three percent of our elementary school students are attending on a hybrid model. Seventeen percent are attending remotely. And there's a decision to be made, do we want to go to the full in-person model or would we feel more comfortable with a fully remote model? That's, that's a decision and, and that's a very personal decision, we respect that. At the middle school level, seventy-five percent of our students are learning in a hybrid model with twenty-five percent learning remotely. And at the high school level, we're at about sixty percent now in person and about forty percent learning remotely. So these are all really important decisions that families will make based on their comfort levels of returning. What I do want to share is, I can't promise you that COVID will not be in our buildings, so one of the things and when we. Our first case, I actually received an email saying, Dr. Hatter, how, how did you allow COVID to get into our schools, how, how did somebody with COVID come into our schools? Please understand that so many of these circumstances are not within my control. It's possible that somebody who is ill may come to the building, we have four thousand people who, if everyone's in, we have four thousand people who go in and out of our buildings all day, it's possible. That someone has COVID, what I will tell you is that your child would have been wearing a mask, they will have been behind a barrier. There will have been cleaning and disinfection protocols that were in place and that are in place. And the contact tracing will be very, very thorough, these are the things that we have. Really spent a lot of time on this year and we've had a lot of practice in doing. The, and the filtration will be there, that's the other piece of this. Transportation considerations, we have a seventy-one bus fleet. We have a seventy-one bus, bus fleet, I just want to share that with our school community because I think sometimes the, we hear that number seventy-one buses and we say, wow, I, I didn't realize we had seventy-one buses. In our bus fleet, I mean, it's the reason why. Tomorrow morning in anticipation of any moisture on, on the roads, that I will be driving the roads myself at four twenty-five in the morning. So that we can make a decision by five AM, there, there's a reason why. We're out there and I'm out there personally at four thirty driving the roads to make sure that it's safe for our students because we have seventy-one buses that need to traverse. A pretty large area. With that said, although we have seventy-one buses, the buses can get more crowded than some may be comfortable with. So I will share with you that we have no plans to increase our seventy-one bus, bus fleet at this point. So I just share with you, we're going to, and, and Mr. Cole had a meeting with our transportation director who had a meeting. Also with the, with the bus company. And we're looking at strategic patterns now that we're introducing more students to the system. We understand that the bus implications are pretty great. So we will be looking at a modified seating arrangement to space children as best we can. But I will tell you that it will not be in every other seat type of situation on the bus. Early on in the year, I saw students having two or three or four students having, having an entire bus to themselves. That's no longer the case today and it will not be the case when we welcome more students back. So I share that with you on the transportation, that is a very real consideration that I just want to be upfront transparent with our community on. And infectivity rates, we're looking at that, of course, and monitoring that and, and numbers continue to trend in the right direction for us and I hope that they do. Continue to trend that way. You bet, next slide please. So for the timeline, where, where we're looking is we began February first, I'll, I'll just look forward. We're looking at additional high school students' space permits with the six feet, we don't have the barriers yet, please, please know that, that, that we don't have the barriers, the barriers were just. Clarified for us this past week. So March fifteenth, we're looking at additional students from our special education program, those families have been contacted. March twenty-two, if you recall at the last board meeting, I had shared that mid to late March is what we're looking at for a kindergarten return. We're looking at the week of March twenty-second, additional information will follow to the families in our kindergarten. Schools are closed the following week, which obviously throw plans back a week. And then when I say early, mid, late April, it's a phased return of the other grade levels within the month of April. And when I say of the other grade levels, it's, you, you can kind of map it in first, second, third, all the way up to twelfth grade. So this plan is not just for the elementary school, this plan is for. All students in our district. With, with regard to the. Return of students, April is tentatively where we are. There are a lot of factors that will influence this. And when I say April, I'm looking to, we are looking to return additional students after the spring break and then we'll phase that in. But I'm optimistic, this is not a position that we had been in. Prior to. This is not a position that we had been in prior to this change in guidance. But there's a lot of work to do between now and then. And I will tell you that our team has been working around the clock, literally, literally around the clock to. Move the process along in the safest possible way. I'd love the kids back tomorrow, personally, I'd love the kids back tomorrow and, and I think we'd all agree. This is a measure twice, cut once type of situation. And we have to have surgical precision here. Or we risk setting back the progress that we've made. We have not shut schools for a COVID relate, related case since January eleventh, since we returned from the holiday recess. I'm pleased, I'm pleased with that. We took a very careful approach, very careful approach, coming off of the holiday recess. Coupled with the new guidance. We have not had to close schools for a COVID-related matter since that time. We're going to continue to be really, really careful because yes, the goal is to open schools, but the goal is to keep the schools open. We don't want the situation where we're in a day, out a day, in a day, out a day. We want the kids back. And we want them back and we want them to stay back in our schools. I want to just thank. Some people first, I want to thank my team at central office. I, I can, I can be very persistent in my views and I know that. And I, and I can really advocate for what my perspective is and my team has been great. Tom, you're on this call, Lisa, you've been great, Tom, you, you've just been such a great partner in the work and I thank you for helping us to get here, we don't get here without you, our principals. Have been remarkable, the principals are the people who are. Really meeting this on the front lines, our teachers have been so extraordinarily flexible. And I will tell you, our teachers' union has been just such a joy to work with, they have been terrific. I've had conversations with our teachers' union and they want the students back, the teachers are here, they're working anyway. And they want the children back and they know how important it is for the children to be back, so I really thank. All of our teachers, the union, their leadership, they've been absolutely terrific. The custodians. I shared with you that I sometimes arrive on campus at four thirty in the morning on days of snow. We have custodians inside of the building, readying our schools at that hour and, and it's absolutely remarkable. And as I leave, sometimes well after this, they'll still be here, working in our buildings and, and my hat is off to them, they have done such a remarkable job to make sure the facilities are safe. For our children. And my children go here just like our community's children, just like your children go here. I really respect the job that our custodians, our grounds people have done. To make the campuses safe for our children to return. And our nurses, this has been, you talk about being a school, in a school health office during a pandemic. This has been remarkable, I don't know how they do it. And, and perhaps some of the unsung heroes are our teaching assistants. They, they really are the unsung heroes in, in a lot of this, our AIS teachers have been amazing, our reading teachers have been amazing and then I see our AIS teachers and they have done. Such, I'm sorry, I see our CTAs and they have done such a wonderful job, I, I'm so impressed. By the work that they have done. So with, with regard to this entire school community, we're all committed to one thing. And then certainly some things that come off of that, but we're committed to the children of Yorktown. We're committed to health and safety, to all of the great things that this district does. With regard to. I'm seeing some, some items here that I'd like to address, but you bet, can you go to the next slide please? I, I know no other way than to be transparent with our school community, with the board, I, I really know no other way than to be upfront with you. When you put more people in a building. You are going to have more quarantines. That is just a mathematical fact. The quarantine guidelines are still six feet. So as we go to six feet, the. As we go to distances less than six feet, quarantines will be increased, so I just share that with you. That, you know, I, I don't want there to ever be this perception that we're returning students, so there will not be any quarantines and, and all has gone back to normal. We're moving in that direction and we're trying to get there and that's the aspirational goal that we have, there will be quarantines. That result, even though they're wearing masks, that will happen. Quarantines can have an implication on school closures, there is a potential. That we have enough cases that will result in a school closure. Transportation capacity I shared with you. We're going to look at infection rates in the community, but we are not tying a specific number. To whether we open or close the schools because the infectivity rates can be on one side of town, the infectivity rates can be tracked to one building, they can be traced to sources outside of the school. There's not one hard and fast number. And, and they tried that with the state micro cluster and, and they get away with that as quickly as it started, it doesn't work, it, it's not an effective strategy. And the experts have agreed with that. The hybrid model is discontinued, so when a student is absent, they're absent and, and I understand that. We have to look at the remote sections and, and determine how those proceed, we will continue to offer a fully remote option. But based on the number of students who come back in person or the number of students who go out for fully remote, we may need to recalibrate those, so we have to stay flexible, we have to stay fluid. You bet, you can go to the next slide. From the beginning. And I remember it like, like it was yesterday, unfortunately, but it's almost a year ago, when we closed our schools. We didn't know what this thing was, we didn't know what COVID was at that time. I'm going back to early and mid-March of twenty twenty. There was this disease that was really concerning and it's still really concerning and I don't want to minimize that, it's a concerning illness and, and it's taken people we loved from us. But our goal has been to get the kids back and, and we know the kids need this. I've heard from so many parents. After we started sports, I've heard from many parents through our athletic director, through some of the coaches. The transformation. In the students' mental and social emotional state. Sports we knew was about so much more than sports. And getting the students back gave them that opportunity. To just feel normal again. Yes, they have a mask on. And it's different to play sports in a mask. And just like as I look at these students in, in our schools. We want them back and they need to be back. Yes, it will look different, it'll look different for a time, they'll have masks on, they'll have a barrier. These are pretty substantial barriers, they'll be affixed to the desk, yes, there will be a barrier, it's a trifold, it overhangs the desk, it's hard to see. But there will be barriers that are affixed and that'll look a little different. There will be. So many different measures, visitors will be limited in the school. But we want the kids back and this is the next step toward that goal. And I speak for this entire faculty and staff. When I tell you the best place for the kids to be is our buildings. We understand that there might be some concerns about returning to a five-day-a-week model. And I can't promise you that everything's going to be terrific and that everything, there won't be bumps in the road, there will be bumps in the road. And we're going to work through those between now and the time we welcome additional students back. We don't have the room to do it at six feet, we don't, if we did, we would have done that already. This is our way back and I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it as superintendent and I'm looking forward to it as dad. And, and that's my report, Jackie, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ron, before we go to questions, I guess maybe I wasn't clear or maybe people weren't on the meeting when we first started. We will have a public comment where people can raise their hand and ask questions at the end of the meeting, we're not doing Q and A's, we're not doing chats, so. I, I see people are, are putting in questions, we're not going to be answering, we, we said we would do a public comment. Where people can raise their hand and ask questions live at the end of the meeting and I'll ask again because I see we only have first names on some places, we need first and last names. To match your name when you get on and your video will be engaged when we do ask you, so thank you very much for understanding, I appreciate that. Ron, thank you very much for this, it was very comprehensive. Mike, did you want to have any questions?
No, I'll wait, I'll wait till the end, I'm fine right now.
Peter?
I'm saying, I'll wait also, Jack.
Freshme?
Same.
Cheryl?
No, I'm good for now, thank you.
Lisa?
I'll wait to the end of the meeting to have the discussion as well. Thank you, Dr. Hatter, for doing what you did to get us to this place, I, I really appreciate it, you and your team. And I know the members of the community who want their kids back five days appreciate it as well.
All right, um, so I guess you can move on, Ron.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure that there are, I'm, I know there are going to be a number of questions on timeline and on the phase in.
Yes.
What I will share is that we're going to be putting out additional information this week. Some of these are vague because we're still working through the extent to which we can return students, so when, for example, additional special education students, as of right now, that's six through eight and that will be some grades at the high school as well. So there are, and we're working through those details, the additional grade levels, we can do the math in terms of April, there are not many weeks in April. But we're still working on definitive dates, a lot of this hinges on when we get the barriers. Unfortunately, I, and I know this community, this community, I'll have about ten emails tonight saying, can we help, we'll help. Because that's just how amazing this community is, the reality is I'm not allowed to have you help, it has to be our staff and, and our custodians who do that work. But I, but this is just such an amazing community that I'm so grateful to be part of in, in so many different capacities and, and I look forward to answering any questions as they come up. Be part of in so many different capacities and I look forward to answering any questions as they come up and we'll be sending out some additional information this week.
This is just the beginning.
This is the beginning of a, well, this is another step in a long journey to return our students to school.
Okay, did you want to move on?
Yes, please. That's okay. We'd be happy to. So we did this certificate already and now we have a budget presentation. This evening's presentation is a tax cap calculation. The state aid information, which is coming into a little clearer light and we talk about other revenue and cash reserves. So at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Cole for. To deliver this portion for you.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the fourth presentation in our seven part series of budget presentations. The following slides will discuss anticipated state aid. The status of the district's total cash reserves and a review of the tax calculation for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two budget year. We will also be asking the Board of Education to authorize the submission of the tax cap formula to the Comptroller's Office. Next slide, please. The state aid picture is anything but clear at this point in the process. The numbers on this chart represent the governor's current proposal for school districts. It's unclear whether this proposal will survive the budget process in Albany. These numbers rely heavily on a one-time federal aid that was passed in December of twenty twenty. And assumes there will be an additional six billion dollars needed to New York State in a future federal stimulus package. It's unclear at this point what will happen to these projections if the six billion dollars does not materialize. Additionally, the governor has proposed combining a series of aid categories. That have previously been based on prior year's school district expenditures. These items have now been combined into the newly created services aid category. Presumably, this measure has been proposed to make it easier for Albany to cut aid to school districts in the future. Our total aid has increased year over year because we halted expenditures of transportation costs. In March of two thousand twenty twenty, when COVID protocols required school closures. That resulted in saving two million dollars in costs, which in turn lowered our aid in the twenty twenty one school year. In twenty one, twenty two, our aid will return to pre-COVID levels. Next slide, please. Here's a quick look at the total estimated revenue for next year. We'll be discussing the tax cap formula in just a minute. But first, the total tax levy for twenty one, twenty two will be below the allowable limit. The following charts will allow us to see this in detail. The state aid number reflected here ties into the preceding chart. We just discussed the governor's proposed budget for state aid school districts. We are also estimating that we will need to use one point three million dollars of cash reserves. To comply with the tax cap, three hundred thousand dollars from fund balance. As indicated on this chart and another one million dollars from the two retirement system reserves. This figure is in line with the average cash reserve contributions for the budget process over the past seven years. Next slide, please. In general, our district reserves remain relatively healthy. By the end of the current operating year, we expect total reserve to decrease by just over two point five million dollars. In the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year, more than two million dollars in savings from reduced transportation costs. From the prior year was used to reduce taxes. We believe we will be able to replenish the tax surcharge reserve to the two point three million dollar level. A total of one million dollars will be needed from the TRS and ERS reserves as we discussed. Along with three hundred thousand dollars from fund balance to comply with the tax cap limit. Next slide, please. The allowable tax levy growth factor for the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year is one point two three percent. Which is below the maximum two percent limit. Next slide, please. This is the tax cap formula that is provided to school districts by the State Comptroller's Office. I've included some of the primary variables that we will be plugging into the formula. Again, as you will see on the next chart, our allowable levy growth factor is two point three eight percent. Next chart, please. Here is our Yorktown Central School District tax cap formula. With this, we start with the prior year tax levy and make adjustments for growth factors, levy growth and capital expenditures net of billing need. Our budget revenue assumptions will allow us to comply with the tax cap. But as we mentioned in previous slides, we're requesting the Board of Education approve the use of one point three million dollars of cash reserves. We are currently projecting to be approximately one hundred fifty thousand dollars below the allowable cap. That may change, though, as the remaining less impactful budget variables become known from this point forward. The next chart, please. So we have three questions for the Board of Education tonight in regard to the tax cap calculation. Number one. Do you approve of the of the calculation as it was presented here tonight? Allowing it us to file it with the Comptroller's Office. Number two, the tax cap filing requires that we will affirm to taxpayers that we will not exceed the tax cap limit. Shall I confirm that we will comply with the tax cap limit? And number three, do we, do you as a board authorize the use of the aforementioned cash reserves of one point three million dollars to comply with the tax cap? The next slide, please. So that's everything we have in this presentation. If there are any questions, we'll be glad to take them at this point. Our next presentation will be next week on the the general support section of the budget. So if you have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you, Tom. Mike, did you want to start? You gotta unmute.
Sorry, I thought I did. Okay. Um, Tom, one of the big issues in this budget is that we are assuming some state aid numbers. I think contingent upon six billion dollars in federal aid that doesn't actually exist yet. Is that correct?
It is correct. Presumably, the the legislation that's being talked about in Washington now would be the source of that six billion dollars.
And if that doesn't happen, what are, what are we looking at? Do we have any idea?
We have not been given clear guidance, but the we're looking at cuts to state aid that could be somewhat permanent. Of about three million dollars if these, if this new federal money doesn't arrive. And again, the money that is used right now to plug the hole is one, one year's worth of money. Next year, we'll have to visit this again. If the state can't reproduce that three million dollars for us.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Peter?
Tom. In a normal year, we've been using fund balance to help offset some of the. The to help us comply with tax gap. What do we, what, what is it typical normally typically in a year? What's our number usually that will contribute to on five dollars?
On average, it's about one point five million dollars. There are years when, like last year, when we used three and a half million dollars. Was an extraordinary year that the current year we're in. But on average, in a, in a normal operating year, it's about one point five.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yeah, Tom, can you let us know how far under the tax cap we are at this point?
Right now, we're projecting that after we use the one point three million dollars, we will be under the cap by one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Rashme?
Tom, I had a question on the state aid. So if that production ends up becoming a permanent production. How can we prepare ourselves to for that scenario?
Well, we're going to do, first, first off, it's an excellent question because we're only allowed to budget in a twelve month cycle. So. But we are cognizant of what's out there beyond the twelve month horizon. If the state can't reproduce that three million dollars that the federal government is producing this year for us. Then we're going to have to look at a couple of ways to fill that revenue hole. And the only way to do that, there are two ways for us. One is to increase revenue or perhaps increased contributions from our cash reserves. And some kind of reduction in the operating expenses of the school district. Some kind of a combined effort in those two areas. Both of which are not very appealing, frankly. If we increase our fund balance contributions each year to higher levels than they are currently. We do not believe we'll be in a position to replenish fund balance as we have been in the past. And we could very well burn through that money very quickly over a period of years. So it's, it's going to take a concerted effort and we're going to have to look at every potential revenue enhancement and cost saving technique that we can employ.
And with this relatively new elimination of categorical aids. Forecasting revenues that we may get next year. Become so much more challenging and this is something that I think there are advocacy efforts around the state. To stop this from happening moving forward because this is just so problematic. We can look based on expenditures. And have a general sense of revenue the following year based on those expenditures. But now with the elimination of these categorical aids and commingling these monies into one line. It becomes so difficult for any school district, not unique to Yorktown, but for any school district, to follow the pathway of those funds back to the school.
Lisa?
I'm good. Rashme took my question. It was an excellent question.
Tom, I have a question. State aid was cut on us this year after the budget went through. How much was it cut on us?
Three million dollars.
For from this current year?
Oh, in the current year, they've been withholding up until recently. They've been withholding twenty percent.
Have they started giving it back to us?
Yes, we've started to get it back. Once the, once the stimulus money was received in December. And there was talk of additional money, they started to release the current year months. But they were prepared to withhold from us twenty percent, twenty percent of our state aid, which was about three point two million dollars.
And that's what they're proposing next year?
Yes.
This is taking us back to the gap elimination days?
Yes, just at a, at a more severe level, if you will.
Okay. And when is the state supposed to have their budget ready so that we actually know what our real numbers are that we're budgeting to?
Well, their deadline's April first. So we're going to have to wait to see what the legislature does. There's a lot of political turmoil in Albany now, as you know. So we're just gonna have to wait and see what, whether the legislature agrees with this proposal. Or if they make changes up or down in either way and we'll react as best we can. In order to produce a product that taxpayers can support.
So I just want to be clear to the public that school districts are required to have a budget in place that they can send up for a tax calculation by March first. Without having, knowing what the April first budget is actually going to look like. Is that about right, Tom?
It's in a nutshell, it sounds ludicrous on the face of it, but it's exactly what we're up against. Mrs. Jackie, can I get an agreement from you and your colleagues about the three primary questions?
Yes, has everybody with approval of his, the calculations?
Yes.
Yes. Would do it, would you agree not to exceed the limit, the tax cap limit?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we okay using the cash reserves?
Yes.
Tom, you got what you need?
I got it. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Ron, you got anything else for us?
We have three and a half hours or so to get it up to Albany, Tom.
It's said, Tom.
Just, just to close out my report and Tom, thank you again for the presentation. There are some wonderful things happening in our schools. Our science research program continues to do great things. We just had a phenomenal band concert. It was a virtual band concert. And amidst such a difficult time, I wrote a letter to the students in the program. Amidst such a difficult time for the fine and performing arts, our students really made me proud. They made our school district proud, our community proud. Same with athletics, our athletic seasons are going, they're going well. Or as well as can, it can go under the circumstances. It's certainly been difficult, but our athletic director has done an outstanding job. And our coaches and players have done an outstanding job. We've been trying to livestream. I do want to share that the athletic director and I co-authored a letter to Section One petitioning. Them to allow spectators, at least from the home crowd into the stands. So I'm awaiting more guidance on that, but I think we can do it. I think we can allow people into the facility safely. In a, in a, in a very safe and socially distant way. So I look forward to more information on that, but I did want to share that the athletic director and actually the high school principal and I co-authored. A letter on that. So Mr. Barret, Mr. Pichonero and I wrote a letter to Section One asking that they consider having. At least our home fans in two, maybe two people per athlete in the stands. And I'd like to work with the state organizations for the fine and performing arts so that we can advocate for the arts as well. Because that's equally as important in the life of a child. So I show that, Jackie, that concludes my report. I appreciate the time this evening.
And again, thank you for everything, for all your hard work, trying to put together a plan to bring the kids back. We know wasn't easy and we so appreciate. The time, the effort and the care that has gone into making sure that our students are going to be safe when they return back. So thank you. We're going to move on to board reports. So start with the Audit Committee, Rashme?
So this is usually the time of the year when we pick an area of review by our internal auditors. So for this year, the Audit Committee has chosen technology. It's probably a very fitting choice, given just the unusual year, all our investments into technology. So we will proceed with that for this year.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Jackie.
Thank you. Mike, fiscal. Thank you, Rashme.
Um, so last fiscal advisory committee meeting was January twenty fifth. I've already reported on that in one of our previous meetings. I will add in light of the budget conversation this evening. That I attended a Putnam Northern Westchester BOCSE session on February twelfth, which. State Senator Peter Harkam attended and some takeaways from there that I think are important. One, which I was very happy to see and hear. Our district finances appear to be in much better shape than many of the surrounding districts and other districts in our region. So that, that was good. I heard a lot of. Serious issues that other districts are facing. Unfortunately, we've been fiscally responsible up to this point and manage things. Some other takeaways, Senator Harkam was very much on the side of of public education. He had stated that both the Assembly and the Senate are very focused on trying to reverse the governor's use. Of supplanting state funding with the federal relief funds. As well as the consolidation of aid categories. So. You know, the, the. The groups that we deal with, the BOCSE's superintendent forums, the school board associations. We're constantly putting pressure on Albany, but we only have so many voices and so. It's also helpful if those of you in the audience are out there to reach out to your local representatives in the state government. And let them know how you feel about some of these things. So, you know, when we get federal aid and then. In turn, that aid just simply replaces aid that we were already supposed to get from the state. That's not really aid. That doesn't help us anymore. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking to try to turn around. So we're, we're trying. The consolidating of aid is also going to become problematic in further years, as Tom had pointed out. It's going to be very difficult to figure out how we're supposed to utilize our resources when, you know, there's just this one big blob of money and we don't know. Any of the formulas. So anyway, that's my update for the Finance Committee at this point, Jackie.
Thank you, Mike. Cheryl, can you do policy, please?
Sure. The Policy Committee last met on February eleventh. In that time, we were able to review five policies. One of which we felt should be deleted. We have four to be reviewed tonight by the board. And we'll be meeting next on March twenty fifth.
Thank you. And then Steering Committee, we have two things going on at the same time. We are working with the contractors, getting things in order for our summer projects. We spend a lot of time pre-planning to make sure that everything is ready and on site so that we don't have hiccups in the summer as many as possible. We also are working on our BCS, which is a building conditions report. Every five years, this, every school district is required to give an annual, a five-year report, capital report up to the. Every five years, this, every school district is required to give an annual, a five-year report, capital report up to the state. And we are going through and reviewing every single building to see what needs to be included and how that's going to look for our buildings. One thing I can say from looking at it, and Tom and Ron, maybe you can add to it. It looks like most of our buildings are in excellent, excellent shape and there isn't a tremendous amount that has to be done. Is that correct?
Absolutely. The evidence is overwhelmingly clear, but good condition our buildings are in.
Yeah. So that's, that's thanks to our facilities, but it's also thanks to the community for allowing us to do the construction over the last 15 years because I think we've really built a very nice facility that is, is being maintained. So that's great. So thank you. So that's our board reports. We're up to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 25th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, policy, can I be resolved that upon the following regulation be deleted from the policy manual because it is obsolete and unnecessary? And that is 8131, our school safety plans and teams regulation.
So moved, Jackie, it's 8130.
8130, I'm sorry, what did I say? I apologize.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have first reads on the following policies. 0101 gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms, 5154 assignment of students to classes, 5155 student withdrawal, and 8130, which is the school safety plans and teams policy. Anybody have any questions or comments about them? All right, they can go on the next agenda. Thank you. We're up to personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Certified personnel, we have appointments, part-time appointments, regular substitute appointments, other compensations, additions to the substitute list. We have a teaching stipends, a correction, coaches and co-curriculars, and volunteers.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. At the business office, can I have a motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the contract with Educational Data Services, Inc. in the amount of $8,700 for bidding services for the 2021 school year, including time and material. The board hereby authorizes and empowers the board president to execute an agreement with Educational Data Services for the same.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My special education can have a motion to approve the following placements as of March 1st, 2021.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to approve the following gifts, grants, and donations with gratitude. At the high school, we have $20 from New York Life, Your Cause Employee Matching Program and $250 from Bernard and Barbara Flusk for the John Manet's Memorial Fund and at Crompon, $817 from the Black Bond Giving Fund, New York Life Donor Program.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we are up to our public comment. And the way it's going to work is we're going to ask you to raise your hand. I will only call on people whose first and last names are on the screen fully. And we're going to ask that your video be engaged. When your hand is raised, I call on you, you will be promoted to a panelist. Your video must be engaged. You will state your name and your address. You must live in the Yorktown Central School District in order to speak tonight. We'll give you up to three minutes. We will have public comment for up to 30 minutes. At the end of public comment, we will answer the questions. We will not answer them individually as we go along. That is our standard practice that we have been doing for 20 years. So let me just look at who I have as hands raised. Just see. Then I'm not seeing the hands raised. Oh, here I go. Hal Kaufman.
Hi, my question is about-
No, I need, I need your full name and your address, please.
My name is Hal Kaufman. That's okay. My name is Hal Kaufman. My address is 2339 Vista Court in Yorktown Heights.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So my question is about specifically the special education students and the original plan that we heard about was to bring back kindergarten and special ed. And obviously that plan was changed. The language on the special ed mandate had mentioned that students will be getting their mandates to the greatest extent possible. My question is if you're bringing back other students before you bring back IEP students, aren't you failing to meet that mandate of to the greatest extent possible?
Okay, thank you. We, I've, I've written it down and we will answer it at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jennifer Ferri?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Ferries, 1706 Maxwell Drive, Yorktown Heights, New York. I'm just wondering if the kids, it, once you leave the remote and then you can't go back to the remote, what happens when they're quarantined? Let's say one class is quarantined for two weeks. Are they missing then two weeks of school?
Okay, thank you. I've got it down. I'm writing it down. Thank you. Okay. Patricia Giordina?
Yes, I wanted to piggyback-
I, I need your full name and address. I'm sorry. That's okay.
Patricia Giordina, 2186 White Birch Drive. I wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Kaufman had asked and ask if there would be any opportunity or exception to look at it if we are not able to bring all of our ICT students back. If there is an opportunity to look at it by, as a case-by-case basis. I mean, we all know that this has impacted our students significantly. But as a child, as a parent of a child with special needs, it has significantly impacted my child, not only academically, socially, emotionally, but also health-wise. And I was really holding out hope when you had said at your last meeting that you would be bringing them back.
Can I just, may I understand the question? I just, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Is there any way that we can hold to what you originally said and bring our ICT students back earlier in March, as you had mentioned in your last meeting?
Understood now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dana Alangi?
Good evening. Hi, Dr. Hatter. Hi, Board of Ed. My name is Dana Heisel Alangi. I'm at 466 York Court in Yorktown Heights. My question is in terms of the timeline of bringing the children back, are we talking like a week per grade level? Like what? I know you can't give me dates specifically, but what is the proposed timeline for bringing the students back? And are you starting with the youngest grades and working your way up?
Okay. Thank you. Tara Stierlachy? Sorry if I said it wrong. Tara, are you able to put your video on? Jen, do we have a problem trying to get Tara in?
Not that I'm aware of on our end. If you put it, we can try again in a few minutes.
Take her out and put her back in and see if we can get her back in. Tara, can you unmute and get your video on, please? You know what? Let's move on and then we'll come back to her and maybe she can get her, her stuff figured out on, on her end if it's not on our end. Uh, we'll go to Jim Paglis.
Good evening, Board. How are you guys? My name is Jim Paglis. I live at 355 Corning Road. I just wanted to make a statement and also question. Having heard all of the horror stories in other districts, I just wanted to say a big thank you to Dr. Hatter and your entire team for the communication, the empathy, the well-being of our, of our staff and our students. I just really wanted to say thank you for everything that you guys have done. With that being said, to my question regarding seniors, I do have a senior. With events that may be going on, whether it's, hopefully there's a football season or baseball games, or if there's an event within the school, will the seniors be able to partake in anything? You know, if we can't do other things, will they be able to partake? All right. And, you know, if not the other grades, at least the seniors. So again, thank you for everything.
Thank you. Tara, did you want to try again? I don't know. I didn't see your hand raised again. Did anybody else want to raise their hand to speak or ask a question at all? I don't see anybody else raised. All right. One more call and then we're going to start to answer them. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. Well, no, here we go. Janine Meyer?
Hi. So I just have a quick question.
Address at first, the name and address, please, sorry.
Jeannie Meyer, 2721 Larksborough Street, Yorktown. So my question is, with the guidelines that we have now in contact tracing and how it's gone down, now that we're bringing back potentially 20, 25 students per classroom, does that 10-minute rule, six feet, still apply? Or would the class be notified?
All right, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? I'm going to give one last call and then we'll start to answer. All right. Ron, do you have them or do you need me to read them to you?
No, I have them here.
Okay.
So all great questions. And I just want to make sure that I understood them, which is why I asked the clarifying question. With regard to the first question about providing special education services to the greatest extent possible, we are absolutely working in this new model to do that. We have been working to provide this. If there are any concerns, I would certainly ask you to have a conversation with the classroom teacher, have a conversation with our PPS office because they're, they're the individuals who are most familiar with the contents of the IEP. But I do believe that by having the students in person more often, it'll be a better situation for all. And we're looking forward to welcoming the students back with, but again, specific questions should be referred to the teacher just to look at the specifics of the IEP. Jackie, would you add something?
Ron, I just, because maybe I understood something. I thought that, that his, his question was, he was concerned that bringing back the kindergarten students in March was going to supersede bringing back all the special ed, ed students that you spoke about the last meeting.
We're working toward that. The model, the model under the former plan that we had was different and I would tell you not as good because when you have to adhere to the six feet of distance, you're very limited in how many people you can put into a room. So you're looking at dividing classrooms up over two rooms, which isn't the most ideal situation. So no, it's not that one, one grade or one group is taking priority over the others. All of our students are important. We're starting with kindergarten. We are going to be phasing in additional students who are in our special education program, additional students who are in our English as a New Language program. It's not one taking priority over the other. It's the kindergarten students, we've been preparing to do that. We've been preparing to return our students. We believe we can deliver a better model at less than six feet of distance because we don't have to in the ICT classrooms now separate the classes into two rooms, which we were hoping to avoid. And this latest guidance allows us to keep the students all in a room. Obviously, there, there are pull-out services and supports that, that will be in place, but it's not that one is taking priority over the other. We're working through all of our students to return to school. With regard to, unless you'd like me to stay on that question, I can move to the second question? Okay. One of the questions was if the class, if there's an exposure, let's say in the class and the class has to quarantine, what happens to the class? Well, if the class is quarantining, the class will go remote. So it will not be a two-week miss of instruction. That's not something that would be part of the plan. Now, if a student, we, we have received some other individualized requests and we'll work through those on an individual basis. But if there's a case in the class, we certainly would be having the class go remote. Because if there's a case in the class, this actually ties in to question seven from Ms. Meyer about the 10-minute rule, six feet still apply. That quarantine parameter, so if it's okay with you, I'm going to tie two, seven together. The 10-minute, six-foot rule still applies, but also further into the guidance from the DOH, if students are having snack in class and the masks are down, irrespective of barriers, they could be floor-to-ceiling barriers, which the DOH will tell you not to do, but they can be the most secure barriers around. The higher class is going to be quarantined. We're working to try to minimize that even during lunch when masks are down. The class will be quarantined as a result. We're seeing that today. We see that happen now. So when that happens and the class is quarantined, they're going to go remote, there will be the entire class that's going remote. So I hope that clarifies, but the, to go to, from question two to question seven, the 10-minute rule, six feet still applies. However, you can be eight feet away from someone in a classroom if your mask is down because you're having snack or lunch. And many of the aspects of our daily schedule won't change. So snack in a classroom is going, and I'm speaking about the elementary level. Snack in a classroom is going to certainly impact the entire class irrespective of six feet because the masks are off. At the secondary level, it is a six-foot distance around. So we're looking at the greatest distance that we can provide. A lot of it will be informed by the survey that we conduct in terms of how many students are in a given class. But at the secondary level, generally the children are not eating in class. They're not snacking in class. So the masks are on. So it wouldn't be a full classroom quarantine. It would be the individuals within six feet for 10 minutes of, of that student. That's at the secondary level. Is, is it okay if I move forward? Was there anything else that you'd like me to elaborate on?
Can I ask, can I ask a clarifying question there, Ron? So if I'm in the secondary school and I'm changing classes, going in the hallway and we have our masks on, is that, am I assuming that it's not going to take me 10 minutes and therefore that's not a quarantine situation? Is that how we look at that?
That's correct. It's a four-minute passing period from one period to the next. The masks are on. I was actually in our hallways today at the high school during the change of class. And the students have been wonderful about keeping the masks on both their nose and their mouth. So it is a finite amount of time which the students are in class, but we still are looking at ways to mitigate that because I do understand the questions that come up about congestion in the hallway. And there are a finite number of ways to get from one class to another. So we are looking at that and all of the, and the building reopening teams are going to be meeting to talk about these very specific issues to a school. So the district-level team would not meet to talk about- the district-level team would not meet to talk about high school change of period. So the high school reopening team will get together to talk about those things where the elementary groups will talk about things, matters that that are more closely aligned to the elementary schedule. So we're going to be doing this on a building on a building basis as opposed to the district-wide plan, just because the issues are so unique to the to the level. The question about all ICT students back earlier in March, that is, that's part of the goal to have as many students in our special education program back as possible. At the elementary grades, we can deliver a better product if we delay after the break, right after the break. At the secondary level, we're better positioned to welcome additional students back in the in the ICT programs. But we are looking at this, and that's why I haven't put out specific dates. It's so fluid. What I will tell you is that at some point in April, K-12, we will be back. We will be back at all grade levels. And Mr. Pugliese, Jim mentioned the seniors. We really want the seniors back in our building. Their their junior year was upended. And the argument can be made, well, you know, they've lost half the year and they've lost such a big part of this year. Can we bring our seniors back so that they can just fill out that spring semester of their senior year? Jim, I'll tell you, that's been on my mind and all the senior parents. I see a lot of senior parents on this call and on the board. I look at, I look at our group and and the senior parents are, the seniors are on our minds. I can tell you, I've met with Mr. DeGennaro several times to have conversations about what's happening. And it sounds like there are some really good things that are happening. I've been in communication with Chief Noble because I do think that the senior car parade is going to be a must for for this June. And I think that's really important. And Chief has been so terrific and so supportive of of our schools and is happy to assist in that regard. We are planning for our seniors and we want the senior events in terms of attending sporting events or attending additional events. These are not Yorktown rules. These are Section 1 rules that we're following. So I'll tell you that the athletic director and I and Mr. DeGennaro, the principal, issued a letter to Section 1 asking them to reconsider their position on spectators. I think it's great that the children are being allowed to have a season. But what about the parents getting to watch their children have a season? That's so important. And even honestly, in the performing arts, I'd love to see some members in the audience because you think about all the sacrifice that we've made as parents to see our children live out their athletic dreams, their theatrical dreams, their musical dreams. To not be there for their final performances, to not be there for their final games just feels wrong and it seems wrong, especially if we can do it safely, which I think we can, and we've been advocating for that. So Jim, your point's well taken. We want the seniors to feel as part of their school as possible. I do believe the high school administration's done a nice job with that. Some of it is outside of our control in terms of capacity and occupancy that were allowed at these events. But please know that we are advocating and we do it quietly. We'll write letters and we'll schedule meetings with those who make those decisions. And I'm hoping that there will be a reversal that allows spectators at least to, or home athlete in the stands. For indoor, outdoors is a little bit different, but even outdoor has been tricky. But we want, we want people to watch their children play the sport they love or the instrument that they love or in the performance that they love. Timeline, starting with, Dana, your question was with regard to timelines. Yes, we're going to start with the youngest. We're going to work our way up. But we have 13 grade levels and the phase-in will happen before the end of April. Again, my hope, I'm telling you that phases is going to happen before the end of April. If I don't get the barriers, if State DOH is not getting back to me on authorization of the plan, those things may throw off our timelines. I do anticipate everything going smoothly. I think that we have really done due diligence to get to this point. But it can't be a grade level a week. That that's not going to happen because we're going to do kindergarten phase-in before we need to monitor the traffic patterns on the campus. And that's part of the reason for the phase-in. I don't know if I explained that clear enough. Why would we not just go all in and why would we not do it sooner rather than later? Part of the consideration is right now our campuses at arrival and dismissal have been quite busy, quite congested. We've actually had some fender benders in our parking lots as a result of the congestion on the campus. We need to phase this in slowly so that we can build our capacity to accommodate the number of cars that I anticipate because I don't know if bus ridership is necessarily going to increase. So those are parts of the consideration and the calculus here. So yes, we would start at some of the earlier grades, but but it's going to be more than a grade level to get a week to get to that goal of phasing in our whole district in April. With, and again, I'm not being intentionally vague here. There are still some details that I need to work out, so I can't come out and and commit right now to tell you that on April 6th, first and second grade will come back, come come back in because I am not 100% sure that that's a reality right now. So we're still finalizing some of the details. We are telling you that April is our target to have everyone back at some point in April. With I believe I addressed all of the questions that were raised because question number five, we weren't able to get the audio and the video.
Right. And so then I had three that were emailed in. The first one was actually emailed in prior to this reopening plan coming back from Gina Lucassio Ortiz. So it was based upon the last meeting where we said we had to keep it six feet. So it really has changed. She has more questions. She's welcome to ask them. Amy Pearl said last month she inquired about the new housing developments in town and how they would affect school enrollment in the future. It was suggested the school district following up with the town to get a better handle on the proposal. She just wants to know where we stand with that. And then we had Connie Davis, who was asking about what dates the grades are projected to come back to school five days a week. And she's also concerned about what's being done to minimize canceled meets during kids' remote learning days. It's a problem that she considers. And are we going to require teachers to be vaccinated before getting all kids in five days a week? What percentage of teachers, and if so, what percentage of teachers are already vaccinated? What is the infection rate that schools will close again now that the numbers are lower? And what can we do as a community to ensure that our schools stay open safely?
Trying to write as fast as I can.
Oh, I can read them off to you.
No, no, no. Please let me know. Question seven, I believe, I'm sorry, question eight, the first one that you read, Jackie, I believe, had been addressed with this presentation.
Yes.
Certainly clarified with regard to the developments that are happening in town. We continue to be in communication with the town. It still is a fluid situation as the the bigger projects are so early in development. So there is still some uncertainty. However, we have engaged our construction manager to look at some of the different options that we have available to us with regard to space. And we'll be meeting with facilities, I'm sorry, with the steering committee and with fiscal advisory to have a conversation about some of the options. We have researched some of the options available to us. French Hill seems to keep coming up and can we repurpose French Hill? French Hill is really not school-ready. We're looking at the cost to get French Hill to be school-ready. When you look at the technology upgrades and some of the other infrastructure and then the operating expenses, when you look at all the staff that are required to operate a building that has children and staff in it, there's a recurring expense. And truth be told, I don't even know if the money is to get French Hill restored to a school-ready condition would be aidable in state aid. And then we would have to go past the tax gap in the year that we decide to bring it online. So those are all of the things that we're working through from an option perspective. We have studied that. We understand the capacity of the buildings. We also understand the the enrollment demands that could be placed on our schools because historically we have seen a little bit over one, one and change, 1.3 students per, I think the exact number is 1.3 historically, but Tom, you can correct me on that if I'm wrong, but it's been about 1.3 per new unit developed in town. And that's something that we're mindful of, especially with the scope of the projects and the attendance zoning. And that's another thing that we may need to look at at some point down the road. And I'm talking down the road. I'm not talking about next year or the year after that, but it's something that we're going to have to look at should these developments come to fruition. So we're all mindful of it. We're all aware of it. We are really zeroed in on these projects and the town has continued to be wonderful partners with us and providing us information and really doing a nice job of being as transparent as they're able to be because they don't have all of the the facts at this point. With regard to the question about the meets on the remote day, I'm hoping the remote days, I'm sorry, the hybrid days are coming to an end. They will come to an end by the end of this month for our kindergarten students. But yes, we do have people who get sick. We do have people who are absent, and that's a reality of operating a school district at this point. And those are some of the unavoidable realities that we face each day trying to staff buildings where people become ill and it's a reality for us. With regard to vaccinations, we're not going to set a percentage around the number of staff who need to be vaccinated. That's a very personal decision that someone makes. I think the important part for us is to ensure that our faculty and staff have access to the vaccine. So those who would like to take the vaccine have the access. And thank you to our friends at Westchester Medical Center Health for their support and their partnership. And I think we're moving in that direction. I'm really encouraged by the latest developments and and their willingness to assist our faculty and staff in accessing the vaccine as they are eligible under the state's 1B prioritization system. So is there a vaccination rate? We're not going to tie it to that. You're not going to, you're not going to return immunity in a school setting anyway because 3,400 of the 4,000 people in the system are not eligible for the vaccine. So this idea of setting a percentage of 70% or 80% really doesn't add up because the vast majority of the people with whom we're going to interact on a daily basis are not eligible for the vaccine. So we're going to ensure that our faculty and staff who want the vaccine have access to the vaccine and we're trending in a positive direction in that regard. With regard to infection rates, I thought that I answered that earlier. However, I just want to reiterate that we are not going to set a specific target. Those don't work. It's a one-dimensional view of the situation. And I think we have to take a multi-dimensional view of the situation so that we can ensure that we're being guided by the correct science and not by a number that may not tell the whole situation and the whole picture. We, I think, have been really responsible in our decisions to open and close schools beginning as early as September. We made a little decision to stagger the introduction. That seemed to work out well. We made the decision to have our conferences right before the holiday recess. That worked out well for us. We made the decision to go remote the week following the holiday recess. That worked out well for us. And we're going to be able to return our students this spring. And I'm optimistic that with all the steps that we're taking, actually, they're outside of my office disinfecting the office as they do every one of our instructional spaces every night. The, I do think that this will work out for us. We will have bumps in the road. I don't want to, I'm cautiously optimistic here. I'm cautiously optimistic. I've seen enough of this pandemic play out in our school and other schools to know that there will be bumps in the road, but we're committed to returning the students. We're committed to the safety of our faculty, staff and students. And I do think it's going to be a wonderful spring in the Yorktown Central School District, and it sets us up for a great summer heading into the fall where we have our students back.
I just want to caution people. One other thing is that we still have to worry about what Department of Education says, what the Department of Health says, the state and the county department helps. So at any time that they change their game plans, we're going to have to react to them. Is that correct, Dr. Hatter? Yes.
That is absolutely correct and and we'll be prepared. We'll be prepared.
Okay. We're up to board comment. Lisa?
Yeah, thanks. So I just want to say, I said earlier, thank you. This process has been incredibly frustrating. I know you feel it, Dr. Hatter. Some of the things that we talked about at our last meeting with Dr. Casaro and specifically questioned whether we could do it. Now it's been flipped around by the Department of Health and we were told before we couldn't. And now we can. So thank you for pivoting. I think it's a word we've heard a lot in the past year in our personal lives and our professional lives and now in our school and scrambling and making it safe for our kids to come back. And I, and I also echo what Jim Pugliese said. You know, not just about what we as a board do, but we you as an administration doing, what our community does, because if the community wasn't doing it, we wouldn't be able to get the kids back. You know, they keep our positivity rate low so that the the school is safe for the kids to come back to. So thank you for that, everybody. And I saw the offers in the in the Q and A to come help move furniture, that there would be parents who would come and and help get the school ready for the kids to come. And I know that that's what Yorktown is about. So everybody coming together as a community to make this work and it will work. It'll just take some time. So thanks for all the hard work and, you know, we're getting there little by little. We're going to get there. There'll be some setbacks, but we'll get there. So thank you. And so for anybody who's thinking, well, you know, last meeting, they said we couldn't do it. This meeting, we said we we can do it. I hear you. I feel the same way. I don't know why, but we're just going to go with it and we're going to get our kids back and hopefully happy and not like in some plastic bubble, but as close to normal as we can get them to be so that they can be happy from kindergarten to the seniors because you can make an argument at every single grade level, there's a reason why they need to be in that building and learning. So let's, let's do it. Thanks, Dr. Hatter.
Pete?
I'm good, Jack. Thanks.
Rashmi?
So I wanted to thank Dr. Hatter and our entire administration for their hard work and the detailed planning that's gone into bringing back kids. I know we've spent hours trying to figure out how to bring the kindergartners back, our special ed students back, and now we're going to work our way to all the other grade levels and make progress. I also wanted to take a moment to recognize Ms. Coletta and send my deepest condolences to her family. She was an extraordinary teacher and a human being, and we will miss her.
Thank you. Cheryl?
I wanted to thank Ron for a very thorough, detailed and well-thought-out presentation tonight, not only just the presentation, but the actions that are associated with that. So I thank you so much for thinking of as much as we can at this point with the knowledge that we have, knowing that who knows, we may have to change accordingly depending on what goes on, but we're very hopeful that we can continue on this path and very excited about it. And I also wanted to thank just having children in really taking full advantage of all the programs that the school districts have to offer. My children being involved in athletics and theater and choir. I think we've done a great job. Athletics has done a job so phenomenal that we have schools, you know, admiring us when they leave meets and we just finished the track season. We had a track that was cleared for every single meet that not every other school could say the same. So we were really able to take full advantage of a really nice and complete season. Along with that, I know you mentioned the band concert last week. Choir also had a concert. They were both, and I know you, I know you saw it, so I'm just saying it because I'm sure it's just a slip of the tongue. So but they both did a phenomenal job. I have to say, I don't know how Ms. Kluga and Ms. Stock pulled these concerts off virtually. They are incredible. And so I have to thank, you know, the Performing Arts Department as well as the Athletic Department and everyone who helps out behind the scenes, including all of the crews who do all the clearing and the cleaning and all of that that make all of this possible. So thank you for making all of the co-curriculars and athletics possible to our, all the people who help out with that in the district. And and also to Tom tonight, just thank you for a great budget presentation as always.
Thank you. Mike?
Now I'll echo my colleague's sentiments, Lisa Rashmi, Cheryl. Not much more can be said. I'm cautiously optimistic that we are going to be able to get kids back in school and gonna be able to get kids back in school and keep them in school and that will be what's best, not just for them, but for everybody involved. So we'll keep pushing forward and hopefully we'll, you know, anything that gets tossed in our way, we'll figure out a way around it. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, last time when we had Dr. Casaro there and we were talking six feet, I said to you, Ron, I said, well, if they come back and they say three feet, what will you do when you say, I'm gonna bring them back at three feet? And that's what they did and that's what you're doing. So you're true to your word and I so appreciate. You know, everybody's pivoting. Everybody's doing what's necessary. I think you spend your time spinning in circles. You pivot so much, but we are appreciative and I, I am so appreciative to all of our staff that has, that have also pivoted. Every time you ask the teachers if they'll do something, they say, okay, how do we make it work? Same for our aides, same for our nurses. Everybody has just said, what are we gonna do to make it better for the kids? And I am so appreciative to the entire district for doing that because they've all put our kids first. So thank you to everyone. And I'll turn it back to you, Ron.
Well said. I could never follow that. Our staff, our staff is amazing. Our, our teachers are just the best. Our, our principals are the best. Our, our our team custodians, nurses, teaching assistants, certified teaching assistants. Just everyone in the, the reading teachers, the IAS teachers, just everyone in the organization. Our teachers' union has been wonderful to work with. We have a great group. We really do have a great group and we just can't wait for the best part of our school district to come back, which are our students fully five days a week. Jackie, thank you. I appreciate the support from the board. I think that's one thing why we have some audience. Our board is wonderful. The, this is a great, great board for me to work for and to work with. You, thank you for all of the support because I don't think people see the hours that you invest working to support policy, to support that the finances are there, to support that the facilities are capable of welcoming the children back. So just, I really appreciate you as a group and you as individuals.
Thank you. And one last shout out. Let's, let's make sure we, we, we remember Dennis for Boys, who really goes above and beyond for our facilities to make sure that we're gonna get what we need to make sure the kids are safe and his guys have done a phenomenal job. So thank you to everybody. And if we have nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Good night, everybody. Thanks.
Good night.